Begin this meeting on November 5th at 6:00 PM and we will call to order, please.
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Keim.
I am here, thank you. And why don't we stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Mr. Short, would you please?
Yes ma'am. Ready to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the City Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on any non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes and the public is additionally allotted three minutes each in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action taken by the council. So tonight, we have a couple of ceremonial items that are very exciting.
Is there a public comment?
Oh, is there a public comment? Thank you Darren. Thanks.
My name's Kelly Shalong, a city resident. Tonight, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. Number one, thank you for proclaiming, making a proclamation for Veterans Day and our parade and lunch. And I wanted to be sure to invite everybody out. That's November 10th. And we have Rodney Reed from our committee here to speak on that subject later. I spoke with City Manager, I love saying that, Eric Weir, and wanted to give you an update on the point of honor. As you can see, we've made quite a tremendous amount of progress, but our first round of bricks, which I believe is about 175 bricks that were ordered, have been shipped. They've been made and they are, they were shipped out today, so we should receive those soon. Also, our obelisks, which are seven-foot granite obelisks that will represent each branch of the service, will be arriving in Oakland this week. And then, we have gotten a local person, truck driving company, to donate his time and Recology of Del Norte has donated the fuel costs to truck those up here to Crescent City, so hopefully, we will get those placed before the weather gets too terribly bad. Right after that, we will be placing the memorial benches and then working on the final landscape plan with the city and our permit requirements. And we've had some partnerships with Rotary for that, so we're excited about it and just wanted to give you an update on that and thank you for your continued support.
Kelly, can you tell us who the trucker is so we can thank him? No?
I will get back to you on that. I don't remember his name, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
A benevolent individual.
I could phone a friend and get that to you before, before I leave.
That'll be great.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
My name is Jill Lappel. I live in Crescent City. I am here from the local organizing for homelessness. We sent out invitations today for the group meeting, the stakeholders' meetings. We hope you get them, we hope you respond. Thank you.
Mike Tompkins, Crescent City. We've been hearing a lot on the subject of homelessness from Brookings and we've become aware that there's quite a lot of very disturbing activity around the homeless population in Brookings and some vigilante activity that is definitely concerning and that we definitely do not want to see here in Crescent City and Del Norte County. And so, we're calling on the City Council, we will call also on the supervisors, to give all of your weight and authority to helping to prevent that. I know Chief Mensah is here and of course, we know you will. You're going to give it everything you've got, we know that. We're not worried about you all, but we invite you also to give this your consideration, be aware. We know that there are things going on, for instance, near the wastewater plant. There have been incidents there. Obviously, that's concerning. We really don't want to see people get hurt, which is definitely a possibility when vigilante activity gets started. And so, we're just asking that you be aware and give it your full attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I assure you, we are giving it our full attention and absolutely, we, vigilante is, is not the answer and we, we rely on our wonderful police staff to keep us all safe. Thank you for that. Okay. So, we do have a couple of ceremonial items on the agenda tonight and the first one, I would just like to express my pleasant surprise when I walked into Agenda Review. Beverly Knoll, thank you for advising our City Manager to recognize a group of women. Thank you. So, I am going to step off the dais and I'm going to join some great ladies.
You're going to join a wonderful group of ladies that have done incredible amount of work for this community.
And I'm, I'm going to ask Darren to read this proclamation to all of us.
It would be my honor.
Ladies, would you stand and join me up here?
This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Crescent City recognizing the Downtown Divas. Whereas the City of Crescent City recognized the Downtown Divas for their commitment to promoting Downtown businesses and community events. And whereas the Downtown Divas consist of six local businesswomen, President Billy Kay Gavin Tiger of Six Degrees of Celebration, Vice President Connie McDonald of Soul Feet, Treasurer Melanie Keim of Custom Design Graphics, Secretary Sidney Clinton of North Coast Health Screening, and Board Member Heidi Keim of Pacific Northwest Physical Therapy, and Board Member Sherri Johnston of Johnson, Johnston's Gift Garden Home. And whereas the City acknowledges that the innovative talents, ideas, and leadership of the Downtown Divas has been an important role for revitalizing, revitalizing the Crescent City Downtown, the Downtown Divas encourage community participation and support for shopping local. And whereas, the Downtown Divas began Live From Downtown its first Friday where vendors fill Third Street on the first Friday of the month and local musicians bring their talents to provide entertainment. And whereas, they have hosted Cleanup Day to beautify the downtown area by planting new plants and cleaning up flower beds. And whereas, the Downtown Divas host a Wednesday Farmer's Market with food truck vendors and local businesses as well as including activities for children. And whereas, the Downtown Divas have a partnership with the City of Crescent City to promote business, tourism, and incubating small business for the overall betterment of our community. And now, therefore it be proclaimed that the City Council of Crescent City hereby recognizes the Downtown Divas and their commitment to the beautification of the downtown area and the promotion of local businesses enriching the community. Signed by our absent and missed Mayor Blake Inscore.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it okay if I talk now? Do I have to wait till you sit down?
No. No, feel free to talk whenever you want.
Thank you all very, very much and thank you for recognizing our efforts and that our hard work is worthy of recognition. I just want to state our mission statement, just for everybody in the room and online. Hello, everybody. We are grassroots nonprofit organization sharing a vision about our downtown. Not only are we committed to building a positive force by promoting our downtown as a vibrant destination for both residents and visitors to gather, shop, work, and enjoy, we have also taken on the very big task of re-energizing and revitalizing downtown Crescent City through both beautification projects, long-term improvements, and community family events, as you mentioned, such as Live From Downtown and our Wednesday Downtown Farmer's Market. We are very grateful for the partnership with the City of Crescent City. I want to take a minute to specifically recognize the amazing staff that continuously work with us, Jason Wiley, Daniel Glenn, and our City Manager Eric Weir, for always being ready to help in any way that they can. The positive support that we receive from city staff is immeasurable as we continue to work towards our mission. I also want to take a minute to thank Bev Knoll for her contribution to the Downtown Divas receiving this recognition.
Thank you.
And one last thank you to our business partners, artisans, food vendors, and musicians for their commitment because it's a, it's a hard task coming every first Friday, but our determination to continue to change the downtown narrative. We are better together and we believe we can create this vibrant seaside town for our community and visitors. Thank you all.
Thank you, Billy Kay.
Yes, Kelly?
Councilmember Short, it is Rowdy Creek Trucking.
Very, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That just makes me smile. There's a lot of people in this room tonight also who have dedicated their time and their efforts and helped with Live From Downtown. I just want to thank all of you that, that are in this room and all of you that are at home that have been there and helped us as well because we can't do it all by ourselves and thank goodness, we have some downtown dudes that are sitting in the back there. They're, they're the muscle behind all of it and, and also, I'm getting a cue from the audience, there's some divas in training and we, we appreciate, we appreciate everyone that helps. Thank you so much. It really means a lot. So, we also have another very exciting proclamation this evening regarding veterans and Kelly, thank you so much for the suggestion. Why don't we have all of our veterans stand for a moment if there's any veterans in this room? Thank you. So, I'm going to read this City of Crescent City's Veterans Proclamation. Whereas the City of Crescent City, on behalf of our community, wishes to recognize, honor, and thank those who have served and sacrificed for this country that we all love. And whereas, it has long been our custom to commemorate November 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas, on this day, we salute all veterans, the soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and coast guardsmen, as well as their families and loved ones who also sacrificed for all of us. And whereas, these individuals have given of themselves so that we may enjoy and maintain our independence and freedom. And whereas, the character of those who have served, are serving, and will serve reflect our American values of endurance, strength, dedication, and patriotism. And whereas, we acknowledge that no ceremony, parade, or proclamation can fully repay the debt, the debt that we owe these souls, but we do recognize our obligation to provide them with the respect and care that they have earned. And with this day, we renew that commitment and resolve and that to provide them with the support of a grateful nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Crescent City does recognize and appreciate all of our veterans, both living and gone, and does urge all of our citizens to do the same and to give full respect for those sacrifices made by these brave men and women. In honor of Veterans Day, November 11th, 2018. Thank you. Do I just sign this and give it to you? Okay.
Mr. Reed, would you like to come up to accept the proclamation?
Thank you. that you have extended to our veterans here in this community. They are, some are forgotten, some have never been thanked for their service. I want to thank the Chief of Police for working with us this year, as he did last year, to help with the parade and barricades and making sure that everything goes very peacefully. I'd like to take this time, if I may, to recognize some really great people who are on my committee. I'm the president of the Veteran Day Parade. My name is Rodney Reed, by the way. I'm sorry for not mentioning that. We have a very special lady in our room right now. Her name is Kelly Shalong. Without Kelly, a lot of things wouldn't get done. With her busy schedule that she does through all of her other committees and activities that she does, she goes above and beyond. And Kelly, thank you very much for your service with us. I'd like to recognize Erin Goodwin, who is the Director of the Child Support Services here, who is our Vice President of the Veterans Day Committee. We have Harlan Ziegler, who is the President of Vets Now, a military organization here in Crescent City. Also for Tom O'Connor, who is with the Dragonfly Organization. We also have Kim Floyd from the Fairgrounds, the CEO, who has come aboard this year, who has been a blessing to us. So again, I want to thank the community. Come out for the parade. It's going to be a good one. Veterans and their spouses eat for free. The grains children are going to be cooking it and it's going to be a good meal. Seven dollars, eight dollars, I'm sorry, at the door for non-veterans and everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Thank you again for your service. Next, we are going to have our consent calendar. Can I get a motion on consent?
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Okay. You can all go now.
Thank you to the divas in training also.
Thank you.
She blew me a kiss.
Thank you all for coming. Okay. So, we, we've got a, a motion second.
And I'll pull the vote. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Keim?
Yes, thank you. Okay. We have a public hearing. So, we are going to hear from our wonderful Finance Director, Linda Lever, please.
Actually, Mayor Pro Tem, can you?
Yes, we're going to open, yes, we're going to open the public comment. Or public hearing, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmembers. So before you tonight is a public hearing to adopt certain changes to the city's fee schedule. We have three proposed changes. What I'm requesting is for you to hear the staff report, take public comment, close the public hearing, and then adopt the resolution that will amend the fee schedule. Of course, if you have questions, we're happy to answer. You can also make any changes to the suggested fee schedule. So the three changes that we are proposing, there is one in the section of admin fees and this is just something that has come to staff's attention recently. We've had a number of requests that require us to send somebody over to the storage facility and search through very old records, some of which are not in good shape, and then it takes quite a bit of time to scan them without damaging them. So, we're just requesting to add a fee that would cover the staff costs for the time associated with that. And then, also for printing blueprints if they are requested because those go on special-sized paper and take a lot of ink. So, so that's the proposed admin fee update. And then, there are two proposed changes for the pool fee schedule. One is the holiday sale, which actually has been city practice since about 1995, starting right after Thanksgiving and running through the end of December. We offer some of our punch cards and annual passes at a discount, but just for transparency, we thought we should put it officially on the fee schedule so that it's better advertised. And the proposed sale prices are in your agenda packet. It's pretty consistent with previous years. And the second change is to add a fee for our upcoming swim camp. So, as you know, we received a grant from the California Endowment to put together a winter swim camp program. We have been working with the pool manager and the county recreation department has been very kindly helping us out with putting this together. So, we have the, the proposed costs figured out at this point. We would be using part of the grant to purchase some equipment, which could then be used for future camps if we do this every year. And then, the remaining grant would be used to bring down the cost for the children to attend this first time. So, considering staff costs and materials and buying snacks and things like that, we are proposing a $45 fee per child for the three-day camp and that is including using some of the grant money to bring that cost down. And then, hopefully, this will be a fantastic success and we'll start doing it every year. So, if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer. If you have questions related to the pool fees, the pool manager is also here.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just a brief comment. I'm glad to see the holiday fees getting added into the fee structure. It's good to see those kinds of practices actually become city policy and not just word of mouth. We happen to have, you know, cheaper fees over the winter months. I'm glad to see that that's, you know, the city here declaring tonight that that is our practice and that's what we do and will continue to do. Other than that, well, thank you for putting this together.
So, what all does the $45 cover?
It will cover the staff time. We're going to have, right now, what we're planning is for five lifeguards plus, of course, the pool manager and we're also going to be bringing in four or five county staff to supervise the different groups of children as they go around to the different activities. Also, some materials costs. We're going to be providing some activities, some crafts, and snacks.
Okay. And of those activities, I, I remember discussion, you know, maybe Rin Knoll was going to bring some paddle boards into the pool. I mean, how fun is that? Something like that, maybe?
Yes. Actually, Matt, would you like to talk about some of the programs? Some of it is still being worked out and finalized, but yeah, we have some exciting things coming.
And by the second week of holiday break, these parents, $45, that's a gift to them.
Exactly. They're going to be really excited at that point. Yeah, so I've talked to Rin Knoll and he's willing to help out introducing paddle boarding to, to the kids at the camp. I've also been in contact with Adam Spencer, still trying to work out the details of that to introduce them to rafting and kayaking. We're going to give them a lesson every day. They'll get some recreation time so they get to use our great slide and all of that. We're going to have a safety day so they'll, they'll know how to be safe in and around the water. And several activities that are still being worked out for out of water. We're going to have like Group A and a Group B. So, one group will be in the water and the other group will be out.
So, how many kids do you think you'll be able to accommodate in the camp total?
We think, especially since this is the first one, we're going to cap it at 60.
60.
Yeah. So, once registration opens, people will want to get signed up.
First 60, you better hurry.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
No, thank you.
And just to reiterate, I mean, all the different programs that we're going to be able to offer and the $45 is for three days and it's going to be about four hours per day, so it's $15 per day for, for all those things. So, we're really excited about the camp.
And it sounds like it's going to be a great partnership. I mean, the county has all the systems in place for camps and whatnot.
That's correct. So, we're working hand-in-hand with the, with the county. Now, we had several meetings last week trying to work out some of the details and how the registration's going to go, so we're hoping to utilize some of their systems for registration. So it's going to be real similar to some of the rec programs that they have going on now. So it really is a partnership between the city and county, and like I say, it should be a great program.
I like it. I like it. Okay, so, anyone else have any questions for?
And just one other thing, speaking of city-county partnership on this particular item, on a future agenda, we will be bringing back an MOU with the county to address some of the staff time and all the details that are going to be associated with that, so we can reimburse them for their assistance on this program.
Okay, all righty. Anything else on the public hearing?
Public comment?
Right. But anything else, just adding that to the fee schedule? Okay. All righty, do we have any public comment?
Hello, I'm DeSutter County. Yeah, I have a little issue with the increase of the pool charges. First off, you guys pay about $460,000 a year, and that's taxpayers' money. And yet, there's not, you know, during the holidays, at the very minimum, you should have, for the week off they have, that the children have of school, and Thanksgiving, the Christmas weeks, the Easter, spring break, they, the kids in Delnard County and the city should get to have free pool time from the hours of noon to 4:00 p.m. daily during those weeks. You're paying almost a half a million dollars of taxpayers' money, and the kids aren't getting it. Now, only the richer kids are going to get to pay this $45 camp fee. I didn't hear anything about anybody getting any kind of a grant if they can't afford it and they want to take it. $45 is a lot. Let's cut it down to $25, so everyone can afford it. And you know what? When you think about the increases of the pool passes this year, $160 for 50 passes, $160 in the state of Oregon, of course, will buy you four months of swim time, 30 days a month. So this is a little bit over the top. Now, I do know there's people here that can afford that, and that's fine. I'm not one of them. And then there's the issue of the cleanliness of the pool. My understanding is they drain the pool every other year. The last time I went to the pool, and I never returned after that, I smelled rotten flesh. It smelled like something out of a shoe sale at the Department of Corrections, and I never went back after that, because that's just disgusting, as far as I'm concerned. So, we've got some work to do. I think it's an integral part of this community, but guess what, folks? You get endowment from the Sheriff's Department for the water safety? Is that where that endowment's coming from? Because I know they got a couple hundred thousand for water safety, and this last year, when they put on that big safety thing, that didn't cost the county any money. So I don't know what they're spending their money on. So, yeah, let's develop some partnerships here and get some money, but I don't think you should be charging that much money for this camp. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutter. Anyone else, public comment?
My name is Dan Gray. I'm a resident of the county, and I tend to use the pool off and on. I have two kind of questions, and I guess one that Councilmember Follman just brought up about the passes and everything, is policy, right? You describe it as policy, not just a program, it's a policy. So, since I've been here for about seven years, there's always the talk about the pool losing money, right? I mean, there's $200,000 approximately every year where they, you know, it's losing money. Okay. So my question is, with that policy, with that, you know, with the program you have, the way it's set up with pool passes and punches, I'm wondering if anyone has ever really looked at that as a way to reduce the loss, the financial loss. People who use the annual passes, they may swim five times a week, some six, so they're going in for $2 a session. Anybody else goes in, walks in the door, they're paying five. Now, I noticed in, I read the lead-up to this, and they're talking about, they have these punches and everything set up so that low-income people have an opportunity to swim at a lower cost. Well, if I go in at $5 a pop each time I go in, if I'm visiting or anything like this, where is that low cost at? I don't see it, okay? I see it to the people who can afford $400 to buy an annual pass. That's the one question. It's no big deal. I'm just wondering if, when you do the budgetary aspects, if you really look at that entire thing, do you need to have all those varying things, or when one person goes in the door, they pay the same thing that the next person pays? That's my issue on that one. Number two, in this here, the 10-year master plan that's being discussed, okay? My question with that, because this year, I was told from the last meeting, that this year was a design plan that came about from the meeting with the mayor, and that was held in May. And the, I'm just curious if there's going to be any public involvement in that discussion, or if the person who's designing this master plan, you know, how inclusive is the community going to be? That's my question.
Okay. I think Mr. Weir can speak to this for a little bit. Thank you, Dan. I always enjoy discussing pool issues with you. Yes, we are going to have an aquatics firm, and Eric, do you want to give a little tidbit on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, so in fact, we're going through the process. The RFP has been issued. The deadline to respond has passed. We did receive one proposal, so we're evaluating that proposal right now. In fact, I think we're going to have an interview set up with that firm, and that's just the beginning. So that's just to select the actual firm that then contract would come back to the council. So you would have an opportunity to review it, the public could have their opportunity to comment, but then that's really where the process begins. And the community's involvement on this is going to be essential to the success of our 10-year master plan. So, in fact, not only do we have it written into that RFP that, you know, the community involvement and public, you know, meetings and whatnot are going to be essential to that component, but then we also received an additional grant from Building Healthy Communities to do additional outreach. So not only are we going to be able to do the traditional outreach in which we would reach the people that are using the pool and involved in the pool, but we're going to go above and beyond that and try to reach the entire community so that this plan really does represent the entire community, and we've done above-and-beyond effort, is the hope anyway, to get the community involved.
Does that answer your question, Dan? Okay. Thank you.
So timing of that, we're hopeful that we could have the contract come back to the council, hopefully at the next meeting. Sometimes the negotiation process does take a little bit longer, especially with the grant, so it's not the next meeting, it would be anticipated, it would be the following meeting. And then at that point, we would have a schedule that we could unveil. I believe, off the top of my head, I think it was either, it was 90 or 120 days in which we anticipated completing that master plan. So in that timeframe, we would definitely do that outreach and get the information out.
All the interviews.
But the thought would be that we would have the master plan completed in time so that as we set our budget priorities for next year, we can include some of those recommendations and whatnot, and have the money to actually implement them, or at least make that recommendation to the council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all righty, so now I think I'm going to close. See, I remembered. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can adopt Resolution Number 2018-67 if somebody would like to make that motion.
I move we adopt that resolution. The Resolution of the City Council, City Crescent City, establishing certain fees for various city services provided by the City of Crescent City.
I'll second the motion.
All righty, a motion, a second.
Pull the vote, please. Yes, Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Kine?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to adjourn to the Crescent City Housing Authority. Okay, we're, four of us are here. Do you need to call roll again, Robin?
No, I'll just let the record reflect that we have four members present with chairman and score absent.
All righty. Do we have any public comment on our housing authority agenda? Okay, we will close public comment, and we have several items, or a couple items on our consent calendar.
Move to approve consent calendar. Second.
All righty then.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Kine?
Yes, thank you very much. So now we are going to adjourn from the Housing, Crescent City Housing Authority, and we are back to the Crescent City City Council on new business municipal services review. We have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem Kine. I'd like to ask George Williamson from the LAFCO to address the council with this, and he can give you a synopsis of the report that's before you tonight.
Good evening, George Williamson, Delnard LAFCO Executive Director, Executive Officer, should know by now. And so tonight, we're here to present, I'm here to present Crescent City Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence Update. As councilmembers, you have many hats and serve many functions, and the one that we look at most closely is your role, the city's role as service provider. And as the only incorporated area, incorporated city here in Delnard, you provide a very important function in that regard. You are the service provider, you're the only service provider here in the county that provides water, wastewater, parks, recreation, law enforcement, and street lighting, and a couple of other services. So that's a very important responsibility, given the, given your location. And so we try to capture that, and I want to acknowledge the considerable cooperation and participation of your Finance Director, Lynda Lever, and City Manager, Eric Weir. Also, Chief Mansal, am I pronouncing that right? Okay. The chief was very helpful to us in answering questions and providing us information about law enforcement, and then fire services, last but not least, Bill Gillespie and the others that provide that fire service and emergency response. So it really makes our job easier, it makes for a more complete and comprehensive report, and so what we find is that this really just acknowledges the vital and important services that the city provides, and tries to capture it as concisely as we can. It also acknowledges, makes some determinations. We were able to make some very favorable determinations in terms of shared services and the financial ability of the agency, and accountability for community service needs, including government structure and operational efficiencies. So those are all in the determination, and all favorable, and just feel like your city is functioning as appropriate for, as being this kind of a service provider. On the sphere of influence, this city has a considerable sphere that extends quite a ways to the north. To the south, it captures the Harbor District, east to throughout, to Birch Ocean View and along the Oak Valley Corridor. But to the north, it extends up into some considerable resource lands. And part of our job is to really take a critical look at that, and we were, we looked at the land use and determined that that is an area that is just unlikely to get service. It's unlikely for those services, your services, to be extended there, given that they are resource lands and rural by nature. So we're proposing that that area be reduced, and I think there's a real value there that I want to point out. That is that the purpose of a sphere is to say where you're going to grow, and why reducing, pulling out the resource lands, you can focus on those closer inland's where you might include and extend services. And so we wanted to really make that clear distinction, and that is reflected in the reduced sphere. But that sphere does still continue to include residential and commercial areas where you could provide service, and in recognition of your greater participation in the services for McNamara Field and the air service that is growing here. And thrilled to see such great scheduled air service coming to this community, and hope that that continues. As a native Oregonian, I was sorry to see the air service to Oregon go, but hey, we all make sacrifices, right? But getting daily service out to Oakland, I suspect that that is really going to make that service and that service provider a lot more viable. So that is my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on the municipal service review, or any questions about our proposal to reduce the sphere. After your review, this will go to our next commission meeting, and then I'd like to close with a couple of items related to the city's service on the commission.
Thank you. I have a question.
Okay.
When you say close the sphere, you're removing part of our ability to serve, or you're reducing areas that we could potentially serve. What area did you, I'm just curious where you are reducing?
Yeah, that's a very good question, and so the areas that, let's see, I think I have a larger map here. The areas that we're proposing to reduce are up north, up along Northcrest Drive, let's see if I've got a better map here, I think I have one here.
Is this figure seven within the package?
Yeah, there is a figure in the map, in your figure. So the areas that, when you go up Northcrest Drive, out beyond, especially when you get up kind of in the area, I'm not catching the cross streets here, but there's just some, there's a strip of agricultural lands, ag-designated county lands, that kind of extend diagonally through that area. And then there's some rural residential lands beyond that. So our proposal is to really capture all of that residential area and some of the commercial areas, keep in the standard veneer site, and keep in those areas that are in your urban service boundary, but those areas that extend further north, out Northcrest, designated for agriculture, those would come out.
All righty, does anyone else have any questions?
My questions don't necessarily pertain to the city's sphere of influence, and they're really just kind of more cursory questions that, I mean, we don't have the chance to ask you these that often, but to what benefit would incorporation serve for some unincorporated areas of our community?
Well, that's, yeah.
I know it's a very conjectural thing, that I don't, you know, I wouldn't expect facts and figures and numbers, but generally speaking.
Yeah, it is. There is, it really comes down to who is the best service provider, should land develop. And I can give you an example, for those of you who go into the city of Eureka, down the 101 safety corridor. As you go into Eureka on the safety corridor, you see the big Mid-City Motor World on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, there's an old mill site. It's the old Redwoods, California Redwoods Mill Site, and that mill site And that mill site is just, it's never, the mill's never going to work again, never going to function again, although, there's a huge area there indicative of mill sites of that era, where that is, where you don't see any lumber stacked there anymore, there's no, there's no log decks there anymore. For all intensive purposes, that mill is done. And it's, so the city recognized that they had a shortage of industrial area, and they annexed that, it's called Brainerd, it's the Brainerd Mill Site, and the city said, "We're the best ones to extend services and help revitalize that property," which is basically sitting vacant, and they have a plan for revitalization as industrial use. And they're willing to extend their services, water, wastewater, law enforcement, and open space provisions there. So, that's an example where a city sees an opportunity in, to better utilize lands, and provide city services, and realize it has sales tax benefits, it has tremendous employment benefits. Those are the things where you, as the service provider, offer something that nobody else does, that could be a real economic catalyst.
Okay.
So, yeah, and there's, there's, you know, just the provision of, also, you can provide a very vital health and safety function, too, where there's contaminated water or failing systems, you guys can come in and really make life better where health and safety are threatened.
Okay.
So, George, if, if there were potential future development outside of the area where we have just reduced from, I mean, what's the future impacts of reducing this sphere of influence? I mean, in my mind, our, our water system from here to the Rainy Collector is kind of our sphere of influence. We have the opportunity to, you know, create water connections off of that, add fire hydrants and additional water systems for future development. I, I guess I'm just not seeing why we should reduce this sphere of influence.
Because the, yeah.
What's the advantages and disadvantages to doing one or the other?
Yeah. Hydrants and water supply serve development, and the areas that we're proposing primarily are the resource lands and some very rural residential that typically rely on well water and septic systems, because they've got the large lot designations, large lot county zoning. And when you look at the land use pattern to that very northerly area, you know, that's the characteristics that's there. So, those services aren't really needed there, but they are needed, and potentially are best provided closer in. And when we look at sphere, we're looking at, you know, five or 10 years out, and looking at the last five or 10 years, there just hasn't been that much annexation. There's a tremendous amount of area in your urban service boundary that should be the priority for development, and should be the priority for service. And so, by reducing the sphere, it puts the focus on those areas in your urban service boundary, which are considerable, and none of that urban service boundary has been recommended for, for sphere reduction. So, that all stays in, you've got hundreds of acres up there, if not more, and it just, it just allows you to focus, and those are the areas that we feel, from our perspective, should be your priority for service extensions.
Is, is there a reason we couldn't just recognize those areas, but still leave that sphere larger and open for other opportunities, or am I missing the point? I, I'm kind of, I apologize, kids, we couldn't see the map very well, because it's all black and white, but so.
Oh, they didn't realize that.
In the, yeah, I'm sorry, it's in, in the report, it's all black and white. So, I'm just kind of curious or not understanding why, what would be the point in reducing this documented sphere of influence?
Yeah.
I mean, I heard what you said about, about focusing on our urban areas, I understand that, but I kind of wondered what the, what the point would be.
Yeah. Well, another point that we look at very carefully is the cost of services. And while you do have a, while you do have a water line coming, and the city's made a considerable investment in that system there, so you do have water coming through that area, no question, but there's no wastewater, there's, and, and so, we look at the whole picture. We look at not just water, but all the services you provide. And for this area to come in, stay in the sphere, property owners up there could look and say, "Okay, we're in the sphere, you know, we want to annex," and, and that is a proposal that, that could come to you, and then, with annexation, with changing your city boundary, then there's an expectation and an obligation that you provide all the services, that you provide law enforcement, that now it's not a county sheriff going out there, it's Chief Mansal and his minsel.
There you go.
It's, it's the chief and his staff and his law enforcement that have to go out there. It's expensive to extend water and wastewater services, and people are going to expect parks. There are going to be expectations with staying in the sphere that are going to be hard for the city to meet. That's, that's one of the most important things that we look at, is that people expect that they should be able to annex if it's in the sphere, and residential, especially in resource land in particular, you aren't going to get the, you aren't going to get the revenue from the property tax, from all the revenue sources. You are setting yourself up, in my opinion, for real deficits, trying to meet service expectations in an area that won't generate the revenues.
No cost recovery.
Not insufficient cost recovery.
Okay.
And this, and you have to enter into these property tax negotiations with the county, and my, you probably understand the.
Yeah, it's got to be revenue neutral if we're going to be annexed, and so, I just.
Yeah, but it's often revenue deficit, so.
Other than that, I understand what you're saying about the annexations.
Yeah, and you can't provide services that would be expected from the revenues that would be generated. Can't do it.
Correct.
Does that answer your question? Can we, I have a question.
I understand what, what you're saying about the annexation part of it. I, I just, I just don't understand.
Can we open the sphere back up?
Sure, sure. We come back every five years or so, and so, if we'd like to take a shot at reducing it now, but, you know, I or somebody will be back here in another five or six years, and it's a chance to revisit it. And if you truly are growing and annexing and, and have a new interest in those areas, yeah, we are all about allowing sphere expansions where it's warranted.
And this is a discussion we're going to have at a LAFCO, future LAFCO meeting, and so, we'll be meeting this out, right, George?
Yes.
Because I didn't see a lot of the specifics that you were, of the, I mean, you didn't seem to be able to tell us what exactly was going to be the reduction.
Yeah, and I apologize for the map, because, and what I'll do is.
I can't see it on this page either, so.
Yeah, because there is a, there is a figure, and in the electronic version, it clearly shows where the existing sphere is and where the sphere reduction is.
Would you be able to send some better information to the, maybe the city manager, so he can disperse it to the council?
Will do.
So that we can better see what, what we're looking at?
So, it's safe to say there's no pending need to reduce our sphere very quickly, right? We can let LAFCO meet this out, like Mr. Greenow said.
Well, they're the ones who reduce it.
Yes, yes, I understand that, yes.
We're just being advised of it.
And what's before you tonight is to review and comment on it, and so, I mean, if they're, definitely I can see from looking at the black and white maps, it's really hard to see what that proposed reduction is, and so, it's that natural resource area. And Mr. Williams, myself, and Linda, we did have an extensive discussion, similar to one we're having tonight, as to, to the reduction and what, you know, what would be the, the effects of it. And, you know, in the, in the end, in conversations with, with George, it really is that, that this is the next five to 10-year sort of look, and so, in that case, that's where he's recommending this, and it could be opened up at any time. Now, all that being said, I think an appropriate map for you to really have your comments and review is appropriate, so we want, and George, you can speak to this, is, what's the pressing nature of this? Could we extend this to maybe the next council meeting, where we, we do have a better map?
Are you meeting again this month?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we'll meet, meet in two weeks, so we have another, another scheduled meeting.
Yeah, okay, let's, we'll get the large color, enlarged color map, so that you can really see, and we'll, the boundaries will be much more evident in that.
Thank you.
That'd be nice.
And then, like Councilman Greenow stated, too, this will be, that way you can provide your comments, and then the actual adoption is what comes before LAFCO, but that way you can have the, the map in front of you and really evaluate what's being proposed.
So, George, you mentioned fire.
Yes.
Also in this, is, does this, does LAFCO play any part in determining local responsibility area versus state responsibility area?
None, that is, that is the purview of the, of the state in defining those, the state provide, designates SRAs, and then has local agencies set their boundaries, then they can have LRAs serving within their service boundaries.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then, I just wanted to make a final comment. Because of your participation in LAFCO, you also have the benefit of being part of a statewide organization called Cal-FCO. And so, I have left with your city clerk, a list, we just had a conference, a statewide conference, and there's quite a bit of resource information that is available to you, including, and you probably get this already, but you're a member of ICMA, right?
Yeah.
Are you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, our inspirational speaker at the Cal-FCO conference was Dr. Frank Benes, who is an ICMA coach, and he provided quite a bit of information about the coaching aspects of, that ICMA offers. And so, there's some websites, there's some reports, there's, there's a monthly, there's a monthly newsletter that Dr. Benes prepares and distributes, some really relevant topics. His, his session topic was operating in a messy world, and he is a former city manager, so he has a great perspective on operating cities, and there's a lot of resource information there for, available to you as a Cal-FCO member in addition to your other resources. So, I just wanted to point that out, and you have those copies, and there's probably a dozen websites there. And then, I'd just like to acknowledge the service of Mayor Inscor and Councilmember Greenow on our commission, and thank Councilmember Short for his services alternate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Alrighty. Guess we need some public comment. Would anyone of the public like to comment on our review of municipal services? No? All right. Close public comment. Next up, do we have any legislative matters? Thank you, Mr. Williamson, thank you.
Thank you, George.
No legislative matters.
Okay.
To report.
So, moving on, our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Kime. So, yes, just a, a few items that I would like to, to report to the council. One, we heard from a few members of the community tonight, the Ninth Circuit ruling in regard to homeless is having an effect on our community. This, this is not something that we are taking lightly, from a staff level. We are, we are aware, we are working through it. And in fact, just to give some, some brief, brief background on it, and we'll probably issue a, a public statement here soon, just to try to get this statement out, that, that your city is aware that we are working on this. The, the background basically is that it's September 4, 2018, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals issued a decision in the Martin versus the City of Boise. You know, so, a lot of times you'll hear it referred to as, as the Boise case. When I was at the recent city managers' conference, we refer to it as the Ninth Circuit ruling. A lot of the other cities just refer to it as the Boise case. So, you will, you will hear it referred to as that. But the court basically held that the Cruel and Unusual Punishment Clause of the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution precludes the government from prosecuting homeless individuals for sitting, lying, and sleeping outdoors on public property so long as there's no option for sleeping indoors. And these rules do apply to the city of Crescent City. So, the Ninth Circuit, and I'm sure city attorney can speak to it a little bit more than I can, but basically applies to the Western United States. So, that includes the city of Crescent City, along with many other cities. So, in, in the conference, talking with other communities, our community is especially vulnerable to this ruling, because we, we don't have that shelter. So, a lot of times, if there is a bed open at the shelter, then this ruling doesn't apply, because there is someplace to go. But that's really the crux of the ruling. We're aware of the concern expressed by local residents regarding the camping of the homeless, especially in, in our parks, so Beachfront Park is one of those areas that is, is of concern. We're not ignoring those concerns, but, you know, the city attorney has advised us that the, the case leaves the door open for the jurisdictions to impose some, some regulations on the sleeping and camping, so those are, those are the areas that we're focused on right now, is, is what does this court, this court ruling really mean? What are our legal options? Until, until we actually get through that, though, and we will bring some of those options back to the council, because this is new. So, every city is working on this, we're not alone in this. But as of now, we have to follow the ruling that's, that has been implemented by that Ninth Circuit, and so, our options are limited as far as, you know, the ability not to allow them to sleep there. They have that, they have that right. That's what the ruling basically indicated. But myself, the chief police attorney, we're working to, to really look at all of these things. We're networking with other communities as well, to find out what they're doing, so that we can try to, try to address this in a manner that is compliant with the Ninth Circuit's ruling, but also allows us to have some of those local regu, those local regulations that we need to put in place. So, at this point, you know, this, we can't accomplish this overnight, this is going to take a revision of some ordinances. Ordinances take time. So, one, we have to exactly do the analysis, the legal analysis, figure out what we can do, bring that back to the council to adopt an ordinance, it takes an introduction, it takes a, a final reading of it, and then, once that ordinance is adopted, it's another 30 days before it actually goes into effect. So, this process doesn't take place overnight. We are working on it, it is our top priority, and we just request that the members of the public, you know, remain patient. This is, we are working on it, and also exercise restraint when it comes to, to, to the, to the people that are in the park. We're all human, we all have, have human rights, and we have to respect those. With that, I'd like to have Chief Mansal come down, he can give a report on some of the activity, some of the, the stances of the, of the police department in regard to this issue, and what the people in our community can expect, and then what they can do as well, because it's not only the rights for the homeless, it's rights for, for all members of our community, and so, that means not breaking any of the laws. And I'll let Chief Mansal get into that a little bit further.
I do have one question before we get Ivan up here, whether you can speak to it or Martha. Have you heard any signs that they're going to be appealing this any further, or is this set for now?
The city has requested that the Ninth Circuit rehear the case. They're asking, so when a case is heard originally, it's heard by a panel of three judges. If it's reheard, it will be reheard by a panel of 11 judges. Depending on what happens there, they could, either it'll be reheard or that'll be denied, then the city, if they don't like the outcome, could appeal to, could ask the Supreme Court to hear. to hear it. But, you know, you're looking at probably living with this ruling for at least the next couple of years.
Yeah.
Before, you know, anything could possibly change, so.
Yeah, I understand. It moves very slowly in the courts.
Is that the City of Boise or the City of Crescent City has already asked?
The City of Boise is moving to have it reheard and/or appealed. So we're keeping, you know, tabs on how that's moving along too.
Yeah, and I understand we need to follow what they say until it changes, so. It's the way the law works.
Exactly. And so that's the, that's the situation we are in, but it is something we're actively working on. Unless there's any other comments from the council at this point, you want to hear from Chief Mensel?
Let's hear from the chief.
Thank you.
As this case came down a couple of weeks ago when it was published and our city attorney brought it to our attention, I also had received this information from a couple of other sources. So our response is the police department for the City of Crescent City is we are providing extra patrol at the park where we have some new people using it. We've continued and we have been for the last couple of years, as under the community policing model, is to build relationships, and we have built relationships with many of the people that are down there. We've also built relationships with other community members here in our community. This is where that credit in the bank kind of pays off. So we've got two things facing the police department. One is the community relations aspect of this, and the other one is constitutional policing. And constitutional policing is very simple. We follow the rules of the constitution and explain those to who are unaware of the rights they have and why we do certain things. One thing I have always talked about is the police department and every law enforcement agency for that fact treats everybody the same, respect of both human rights is, I think, Councilman Short had mentioned, but the constitutional rights here granted to us by our constitution. And with that, the other part of community policing is working with relationships with service providers, the public, our city staff, members of the county staff. Sheriff Apperson and I have a great relationship and we communicate on this subject along with other crime trends and things that affect our community. But more importantly, what are we doing every day? Well, we go down to the park, you know, we provide the extra patrol 24/7. I meet with the individuals down there every day or at least every other day, including the weekends. And I've worked relationship with them where they self-police themselves and clean the area as best they can, working with our public works staff. They provide, you know, garbage bags, clean out the restrooms and do all the things that they normally do. They've been doing that with due diligence. So working with a relationship with both the people who are down there who are temporarily using our parks, but also using, working with the people who use our park every day for entertainment and back to nature. Because it is very scenic, it is a very beautiful place to be, and it's a park for everybody to enjoy. And that's what the police department is doing out there, is giving everybody an opportunity to use the park. Some are using it for a temporary shelter, some are using it to enjoy the beauty of our community, and we are in the middle ensuring that anybody gets to do that. We run across a couple of issues, you know, we've, about the tents, the people who are using the tents down there, they kind of move them a little bit so they protect our grass, protect the environment there. They also work towards cleaning up that, and I go down and I work with them on that. Our other officers are also doing the same. But I have a political, political, excuse me, a personal involvement in that and because I live here too, and it's all of our speech and park. The climate I talked about, we've had issues with dogs in enforcing our leash law. We haven't unleashed all this with personal control or on leash, and we work with those individuals that have canines there. And you know, this police department has two canines, so we're all very well versed on using canines in our four, our living paw creatures. I've worked with animal services and we've come down and talked to those owners who have pressed the issue or need some education piece, so we've reached out to those individuals to share with them their responsibilities as owners of dogs and, you know, how they interact with our public. Probably the most important thing is access to me and to the police department for questions from this community regarding this decision and our enforcement posture. I'm available through email. I get many calls as well as personal, people who come into our station and wish to speak to me regarding this, of what we're doing and not doing. I explain to them what constitutional policing is. I also explain to them the parts of community policing. And I also give them kind of a recap, as I'm about to give you. We've had two incidents since about September now that have been on the park that we've made arrests for. One where an individual attacked one of our, grabbed one of our city workers, was not injured, and we made the arrest, and that case is before the district attorney's office now. There was a second one involving a community member, and that case is also before the city attorney's, excuse me, the district attorney's office for review and final consideration. So we've had a strong presence. We've also had a very open-ended presence where we explain to people what they can do and can't do. We've had some good cooperation from the individuals who have been in our community for a long time and have been moving around, and we would be considered that label homeless or transient. They're individuals who know our community and they also understand that they live here too, but they've also been trying to be good neighbors, and that's the philosophy we've been trying to stay can be good neighbors until the elected officials and the people way above my pay grade can figure this out. Because this is a complex issue, it's not a law enforcement issue, it's a community, it's becoming a national concern. And I believe it will take that year or two years for the final authority to say what we can and can't do. But until then, it's my job, charge from you and our city manager, to keep the peace and follow constitutional policing in our city, and that's what I've sworn to do and have been doing along with our officers. So that's kind of my, kind of breakdown of the last six weeks of what we've been doing and how to respond to this. I'll answer any questions you have of me.
I have a question. We have a responsibility to our businesses downtown. And if some of these people are parking their tents right out from someone's business, we're now, in effect, this law is saying that we can ignore that person's livelihood and this person can just park their tent and live right there and, in effect, you know, ruin someone's business. What are we going to do about that? I, it's, you know, this is, this is just mind-numbing.
Well, first I'd like to say this isn't an agendized item, so we can't go into, you know, any discussion or debate right now. I think it was just intended for the city manager and the chief of police to give you an update to say we're not ignoring this, we're well aware of it, and we're trying to work through it, and it is something that needs to be brought back to the council with options, exactly what you're asking right now. What can we do? What measures can we take? What are the needs? How can we respond? How can we do that legally? But, you know, at this point, I don't really think we can, we can get into a debate or discussion about how are we going to respond without it being agendized.
Can we give direction to staff, or maybe either you or someone in your office? Could you come back with some, the results of this and how it's going to affect us? Is that, would you be willing to do that? Or whether?
Yes, and I believe that was the intent, is as soon as we know and we can understand this issue and what some of our options are.
What's enforceable, what's not?
That's, because a lot of cities are wrestling with this. Like I said, on that conference that I just went to, that's exactly, exactly what the cities are wrestling with, and a lot of the, a lot of the other city attorneys are trying to figure out what are the limitations and what are the options that we can enforce as a city through our ordinances that would then be brought back to the council. We would receive direction as to the, to the changes to the ordinances, and then we can start to implement them.
I also wanted to say thank you to Chief Mensel for what you had to say, and thank you to our police department because this is kind of a difficult situation.
It is, Councilman Greenow. In closing, I would like to say the issue surrounding this about the sleeping and the temporary stay in a park and in public places, but does not give an exemption to other crimes such as drinking in public, public urination, defecation, or any of the other things may be associated with bad behavior. And we are taking a almost zero tolerance approach that in working, but working through education and gaining compliance through education and understanding. We've made very few arrests because we've gotten that cooperation and understanding on both sides, both through, and this argument has, and this issue has come on both sides, both for and against this. That's not for me to decide. My job and the police officer's to decide is to keep the peace and ensure that everybody's rights are protected. So we have taken a strong approach to some of the other sizable and arrestable offenses, which are, you know, such as litter and narcotics use and drinking and all those things, as I said. This specific issue, we have gained compliance through them until we receive direction from this council based on our city attorney's opinion when the laws are changed. That's how we're addressing all those roundabout ones.
Thank you. In that future discussion, I understand the struggles you're going through, Chief, and I also want to echo Councilman Greenow's thoughts there, that you're making the best out of a very difficult situation for your police force.
Thank you, sir.
Just in that future discussion, if I could, I believe there's people in the city that are wondering, you know, knowing just small bits about the ruling, is that you just can't criminalize being homeless. That's on the surface, that's a very minute part of it. But I think a lot of people are wondering, just specifically, let's talk about the folks that are near the wastewater treatment plant. They showed up after the ruling. So the thought is, they got the news that we couldn't give, you know, criminalize their being homeless, so they moved from where they were to a prime piece of real estate down in our park because they knew that we wouldn't be able to do anything. So I think people are wondering, why can't we just tell them to go back to wherever they were? I'm understanding that there's no enforcement that can be done because you can't literally make them go because of the ruling. I just was wanting to kind of put that out there, that some people are kind of wondering how, how come we can't post signs that say there's no overnight camping here and have that work? So I realize that's going to be for a future discussion, Ms. Rice, so I don't mean to open up that discussion here and now tonight, but when that future discussion comes, I would hope that we kind of went through that a little more thoroughly so the people can better understand the ruling and how difficult it is for us to deal with it.
The Ninth Court ruling is on the internet, so people can download it, just like many have already and looked at it. It is a long one, and you probably need to be an attorney to fully understand it, but it is a complex ruling and it cites many different aspects of it. In talking with those individuals who have kind of felt seek refuge or feel, it's because they feel comfortable there, they feel safe and they keep dry, they come from a place that hasn't been safe to them or whatever, and, you know, face it, we have a righteous, great city and they felt comfortable coming here. We may not have services yet, but those are some of the comments they've made. They want to feel safe and they kind of do there. And as long as they're compliant with the law, we will treat them the same as everybody else, every other community member. And so far, there's, there have been a couple who have been non-compliant and we have dealt with them according to the law, and we will continue to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I would like to echo the council sentiments as well. My complete support and acknowledgement to our police department. I think they're doing a great job handling a really tough issue. Like I said, this is, this is a priority for city staff as well as our community, and so we are working diligently, and as soon as, soon as we have something tangible to bring back to the council, we will. If the council wants to have, you know, extended discussion of this, we can agendize it, we won't have all the answers other than what we've just reported tonight, which is what this was. Other priorities, we've touched on them a little bit tonight, so the 10-year master plan, I gave a report on that briefly, and so that's moving along. The swim camp is moving along. You probably saw the banners that are along Front Street of our high school seniors that participate in football and cheerleading. So I would just like to encourage other booster clubs too, if they would like to do something like that, then they can come back before the council, similar to what the football and cheer boosters have done. And I think it's a great partnership between the local high school and the athletes in the city. I think that really looks nice. Chief Wakefield's bench has been placed in front of the city fire hall, and so if you haven't got a chance to drive by and take a look at that, it definitely looks, looks really nice and is a great, a great monument to a great person and a great chief of our fire department.
It is a spectacular bench. If you have not seen it, you need to run by there and take a look at it. It's a great monument.
Our water skater project is also off and running, so that is a little over a half million dollar project, and so I'd like to commend the public works department, our new public works director, for pushing that forward, as well as our lift station rehab project. So it's definitely nice to have Mr. Olson on board to ensure some of these projects are getting done. And then city hall's been busy over the last couple of weeks as our auditor was in, and so he's been working with our finance department and getting all the documents that he needs. And it's my understanding he'll be back before the council, probably at the second meeting in December, to report out some of those, some of those results. That was my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do any of you have any questions about Mr. Weir's report? No, you're good? Okay.
He's the city manager.
Yeah, he's the city manager. You guys have anything to report out?
I met with Councilman Short with the auditors on the 20, on 10/23 to discuss the audit and the process and what they expect of the city and what we should expect from them. And so I thought it was a very enlightening conversation and interesting, to say the least. And I just wanted to say thank you to Linda because she's, she does a very good job at what she does and keeps us all accountable. So, for what we do. I also wanted to encourage everybody in the city, it is election day tomorrow, and elections have consequences and elections matter. So please, everyone cast your votes, make your voices be heard as to how you feel this city and this county and this country should be governed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenow.
Just on a little piece of that, remember, new laws are in place where you can show up at a polling place and register to vote right then and there and put your vote in place.
You get a provisional, right? It's a provisional ballot?
Yeah. Can I say one more thing?
Sure. Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, you had your turn.
I just wanted to say, I want to thank Darren for his service as well.
Yes.
This is going, this is his last full city council meeting with us because he's not running for reelection. So I just wanted to thank him for his service and it's been a pleasure working with you, Darren.
Thank you very much. For my report, I met with No Place Like Home Committee, going to look at some future opportunities there. On the 17th, met with Redwood Coast Transit Authority. Some possible future changes for there might be some mobile ticketing, maybe get on your cell phone, get some, get a ticket for the bus on your, on your cell phone. We might be looking at Wi-Fi on our regional buses. If you're going to take a long trip to College of the, I mean Humboldt State, if you're a student, on those longer regional buses, you might be getting some Wi-Fi. We're looking into that. And we're looking to increase some marketing, marketing through Google Transit, which will be available to anywhere, or anybody to, you know, tell them where, where our buses are and what our schedules are in that regard. Looking at getting a couple of new buses also, so those will be exciting to see in town. With Mr. Greenow, we met with Mr. Bedawi and the auditors, and again, it was a very informative and professional meeting with him. And also to echo what Jason said, he couldn't, couldn't say enough about Linda and... to echo what Jason said, he couldn't, couldn't say enough about Linda and, and her truth. He didn't have any concerns in, in her department at all. It's, it's very encouraging to, to hear that again. On my ears in the audit committee, I've heard that again and again, and it's, it's, it's really comforting to sit in a, in a place like this and, and hear that our city finance administrators are, are doing the most professional job possible. So I wanted to say thank you to Linda for that also. As Jason said, this is my last time at the dais. I, I guess officially I should show up for next meeting.
Yes.
However, my, my sister-in-law, sister-in-law, daughter-in-law, excuse me, who is residing with my son in Florida, will be giving us our first granddaughter due on the seventeenth, so I'll be in Florida for the next meeting, so I won't be showing up for that one. So I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure working with you on the dais, Ivan Blake. Mr. Weir, it's been a pleasure. He's Public Works Director. I, I think you've done a spectacular job, and, and I, I like the position you're sitting in now also. I'm, I'm proud of the decision we made, and I'm proud of you for, for making the jump and, and applying for the position also. And with that, I'll just, I'll let it go with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Darren. Alex?
I was in attendance at the True North Annual Regional Conference over this weekend, where Reverend Alvin Herring from Faith in Action, he's the newly hired executive director of that organization, gave not brief remarks. He spoke at length about his job and what he's been doing around the community, around the country with regards to, I guess, continuing that legacy that Martin Luther King Jr. had started. It's, makes me proud to see that the civil rights movement is alive and well in Delmar County. And I'd like to speak for a second about the Ninth Circuit ruling. I appreciate and applaud the efforts from Chief Minsel and our police department and all that they're doing. That phrase, constitutional policing, is a new phrase for me. I'd never heard that before, and I'm glad that our police department is respecting people's human rights and constitutional rights as well. And lastly, thank you for everything you've done, Mr. Short, Councilman Short, for one last time. I will actually have the pleasure of sitting with him tomorrow at this dais for our Transportation Commission meeting. Councilman Short has contributed a lot to my experience as a councilman. I couldn't imagine it without him being here. I can remember, we were dealing with an appeal from the Planning Commission on updating a, updating some zoning, and I just remember the way that he acted that night in that meeting. There was a lot of community members here, diverse set of opinions, and, you know, it was fairly early in my tenure as a councilman, and I was nervous. I think, I mean, a lot of people, you know, it's rough being up here sometimes, and when you've got a room full of people, including people that I knew and had relationships with, that were going to be angry with whatever I did, there was no right decision for us, it felt, that night. And I just remember the way Councilman Short conducted himself in that meeting, his line of questioning. It showed me a lot about his character. It taught me a lot about how to be a good councilman, and so I want to thank you for that, Darren. I'll see you tomorrow at Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Kind words. We are going to miss you. You, you ask great questions.
Yeah.
You, you always ask them in a heartfelt way, and I will, I will miss that for sure. And I'll see you tomorrow at Transportation as well. Thank you all for sort of having my back on the last meeting. I wasn't here, my mom was in the hospital. So I've been flying down there frequently. Thank goodness for Contour Air. It's, it's been great. So thank you all for that. Anyway, I think that's all we got. Mr. Weir?
Mayor Pro Temp County, if I could, Councilmember Short's announcement that he will not be at the next meeting was a little bit of a surprise to me, so.
Yeah, surprise.
So I would just like to reiterate my appreciation for, for you as a council member, what you brought to, to this dais, the decisions that you have made. I couldn't be, couldn't be happier with you. When I was in the Public Works Director role, presenting the items, you asking sometimes the tougher questions, but, but getting that information out, and then now as a city manager, I definitely appreciate what you have brought to this community, and so just thank you for what you have done over the past three years and what you've brought to this community.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. I, I can remember those times when you'd look at me and kind of go, "Okay, yes, I can answer that question." And I appreciate, I appreciate the effort you put into it, Eric. Thank you.
I, I apologize that. Sometimes those things just slip out.
The other thing I would like to say tonight, our mayor is not with us. I wish him all the best in the election tomorrow. I have every confidence that he will win and be joining us after tomorrow's election. But we, you know, have a little something to be pretty proud of. I think he and Chris Howard are with Mayor Toba at the U.N., and they paid for themselves. I'm sure he will have a self-deprecating comment about his day at the YMCA, which we will all harass him about, at the, at the next meeting. You know, like, you know, something.
That's exactly what I was thinking. They should be able to sing it.
But I, I just am so proud of what our community has accomplished so far with our sister-city agreement with Rikuzan Takata Japan, and to have one of our local members be invited to go to the U.N. for International Tsunami Day, wow. That's kind of impressive, and I would just like to acknowledge Blake's, Mayor Inscore's efforts to, to make it there and, and participate in that. So anyway, we miss him tonight. But we will adjourn to our next scheduled meeting for Monday, November nineteenth, at five o'clock. Thank you.